Good evening, everybody. Good evening, we want to welcome you to the 2019 Delray Beach Downtown Development Authority Annual Town Hall Meeting. Please feel free to get up and get more refreshments. We want to thank our wonderful refreshment and food sponsors, Cafe Luna Rosa. Thank you. Our good friend and former treasurer of the Downtown Development Authority, Bonnie Beer, is responsible for that, and we want to thank her for that. I want to go over kind of what we're going to be doing tonight, and it includes your input. This is our Delray Beach Downtown Development Authority Board. Later on, we're going to have just a few minutes to get to know them, what they do, if you don't know them, a little bit of why they're here, what they're passionate about and what they believe in. Laura has a presentation of some of the things we're working on on your behalf this year. We're going to do a little Q&amp;A from the property owners, the residents, and the business people who are here today. They were going to have a closing remarks and a chance to get to know our partners who are here tonight. But I want to, first of all, let me ask a question. How many people here are property owners in the Downtown Development Authority District? Okay, look around. Thank you for investing. How many of you are businesses who don't own property in the downtown? Jim, aren't you both? Okay, I wish. Tyler counts. And how many of us are residents who live downtown? Because you're important to us too. We thank you very much. Thank you for being here. So the next thing I want to do is introduce our VIPs who are here tonight. I want to introduce a big supporter of our whole community, the downtown and especially our DDA, Mayor Shelley Petrolia. Shelley, where are you? Thank you for coming tonight. We also want to thank Vice Mayor Johnson, Deputy Vice Mayor Bathurst, Commissioner Frankel, and Ryan Boilston, who also support this organization. Is our interim city manager here tonight? Also very hardworking, Neil DeJesus is probably at his office right now. Our newest, where's she at? There she is. Our newest assistant city manager is Suzanne Fisher. Suzanne, will you stand up so everybody can say hello to you? Welcome Suzanne. And our other city manager, Karen Gardner Young. Didn't see her here tonight, but I see Missy here too. Missy is always, always supportive of this group. We appreciate you very much. Let me also introduce the real meat and potatoes, who does the really heavy lifting for this Downtown Development Authority and on your behalf. First of all, I want to introduce Lauren Lyle. Lauren, thank you very much for all you do. Kelly Ames, the garter of the drink tickets, so keep an eye on her. Richelyn Miller, thank you for being here, Richelyn. And BJ Sklar, who runs our Visitors and Welcome Center, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And our leader, who we're very proud to have on our team, Laura Simon. Laura, thank you very much. We wanted to do something a little different, and that is give you a chance to interact with the partners that work on your behalf in this community, not only downtown, but the whole community. So we've asked all of our partners that we could find to come, set up a table, and every one of them is here. So let's give them a hand, and I'd like to introduce them. First of all, from the Downtown Development Authority, Jeff Costello and his team. Jeff? Oh, I'm sorry. CRA Jeff? That wasn't anything, just a... Jeb Conrad with the Delray Beach Chamber of Commerce. Jeb, thanks for being here. And our city partners from your Economic Development Department, we have Joan Goodrich. The Development Services Team, who we work closely with Tim Stallings and his team. Thank you all for being here. Parks and Rec, is Sam here? Okay, very good. Parks and Rec, we work... Now, clean and safe. We want to introduce Amanda, who does such a good job leading her team. Amanda, thank you very much. And is there representative from Waste Management here? Okay, very good. Parking Administration Team, George Alarcone. George? There he is. And people from Lanier Management, are they here today too? Lanier, thank you very much. If you have any parking questions, they'll be happy to answer those. We're very proud of this group. This is our Downtown Safety Ambassadors. Kelvin Bledsoe. Kelvin, right over there. And we're pleased to have Cory Pollak. Cory Pollak, thank you very much. And the team that puts on a lot of our backroom things, they do things that people think just happen. First of all, Tara Spiro. Tara? And the man behind the camera, who does such a good job on the videos that you'll see on our website, Andrew Fogel with VUP. And putting this together, we felt that a face-to-face component was key to the success of not only what we're doing, but what we're all here for. Tonight, we're providing you with an opportunity to meet these downtown partners in person, spend a little time with them. We will have some time afterwards to do that, if you already haven't. Answer any questions you have. This is the group, all of these keep, are working behind the scenes to keep our downtown safe and keep our city running every day, Saturdays and Sundays also. I'd also like to, before I get into our board, I'd like to introduce David Cook. David, where are you? David was a past chairman of the Downtown Development Authority for many years with hands. Thank you very much for your service. Are there any other board members that were on the DDA that I missed? Roy, how did you miss out on that? Let's begin with some introductions of our Downtown Development Authority 2019 Board of Directors, and begin the discussion with each member, which we're going to allow them to spend a few minutes and introduce themselves. First, I'd like to introduce the Secretary, Mavis Benson. Mavis, will you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you?
All right, first is introduction. Hi, everybody. I'm Mavis Benson. I have a gallery on the 400 block, Avalon Gallery, with my husband. We have been here going on 15 years now, and love being in Delray Beach. I also co-chair the Merchants Association, and this, I'm going into my second year on the DDA Board.
Next, a man who can't get enough pain. He's a past chair of the Downtown Development Authority, but also he's our treasurer this year and does a great job. Mark Dinkler. Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark Dinkler. I have lived here 25 years. I own Vince Canning Shoes, that will be celebrating our 67th year downtown. The longest family-run business on the avenue. Also, across the street, I own Tootsie Shoes, and I have been on the Board five years, but also serve on the Chamber Board and the Parking Board. So try to keep things going on downtown and connect it.
Thank you, Mark, for that. Next, Dr. John Conde. Dr. Conde, welcome.
Okay, so my name is Dr. John Conde. I own the Conde Center for Chiropractic Neurology here in West Delray, I guess we can call it, west of Swinton, and been there 13 years. And, you know, I came onto this Board to, and we'll get into it a little bit later, but to really see the development of West Atlantic. So it's been a great, you know, time doing so and trying to see things come along here. I'm also on the Board of Cross Ministries, so we do a lot of work there as well. And I was born and raised here. Went to Atlantic High School, met my high school sweetheart there, we got married. She went to Unity School. So there's just a lot of, both of my kids were born in Bethesda. My wife was born in Bethesda. So there's a lot of deep roots here in the city, so.
Next, I'd like to introduce our newest Board Member, Pamela Ramsey. Pam?
Hi, it's nice to see you all here tonight, and I thank you for joining us. I am Pam Ramsey. I've lived in Delray for 13 years. I'm a marketing professional. I love the city of Delray, the Atlantic Avenue, the beaches, everything about it. And the reason I got into this position was I had gone through the Leadership Delray Program. And during that, I got to meet a lot of the people on the back end of the city, and finding out that all of these people that work for this city, they're not doing it just to make money. They really enjoy what they do, and they're really in it for the city. So I decided I wanted to do something to help as well. So I put myself on this Board, and I love the, all these Board Members, you have no idea how wonderful they are. They're all spectacular people. They teach me things every month. And Laura Simon, I can't say enough about with her staff and everything they do. So I'm happy to be here.
Thank you, Pam. Go ahead and hold on to that. My name is Peter Arts, and I'm privileged to be the Chair of the Downtown Development Authority this year. I moved to Delray Beach from the town to the south in 1991, and have lived in the same house ever since. However, I did have to buy a new roof recently, so we'll do that. I worked for Plasteridge Insurance and have for the last 16 years. My area of practice is municipal risk management. And if we were on the avenue, we would be the longest-serving business on the avenue because Plasteridge is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. And incidentally, one fact that our office, when we first opened up 100 years ago, was right next to Cut 432. So we're proud of that. I was asked, thank you, Tom Lynch. I was asked, what's my favorite thing about downtown Delray Beach? And I think the design of our avenue, as well as Pineapple Grove, the set. I really enjoy the culture. We have the Spady Museum, the Delray Beach Historical Society, the amazing events that we have in this facility, and the footprint of Old School Square is always very exciting. We love growing events. This year, we're doing an event in conjunction with The Beatles on the Beach called Delray Beach Surf Festival. And we're also doing the Pineapple Grove Art and Music Festival, which will be coming up on April 25th, next Thursday, correct? And please come down for that. It's going to be amazing. And later on, Mavis has a special request for us that we'll look at. This year's theme of the pineapple, the Arts Festival comes from our staff, and this is how clever they are. It's called Pineapple Grove Forever. So, there you go. Hold that thought. The Chamber, or the DDA is also going to be taking over the Frog Alley Caribbean Festival, which is coming up June 8th, so look for that. And what was, as, what was the main reason that I decided to apply? The bottom line is that I've been around long enough to know that I care about this community. I've always served. I was a student senator in college, which put me on this path. I was privileged to be appointed and serve on several Boards for the city, including the Budget and Finance Task Force. I loved being on the Delray Beach Community Redevelopment Agency for eight years, very much enjoyed that. And I realized that one can make a positive difference if they get involved. You have to study the issues, and really study the issues, because in the end, you have to make the decisions that are best for everybody that you serve. What's my goal and the focus for the DDA? We want to continue to evolve and change with the times in order to stimulate and sustain economic vitality in our downtown. Delray Beach has a wonderful quality of life, and we want that to continue to be enjoyed by not only our visitors, but our businesses, and our residents especially. We know what a precious gem our downtown is, and we up here know that we're privileged to serve and be appointed to this position. It's not just us who know how wonderful Delray Beach is. Let me go through the list that we've heard so many times. Most Fun Town in the United States by Rand McNally and USA Today. Coastal Living named us one of the top 10 America's Happiest Seaside Towns. Verizon Business released its Best Small Cities for Small Business, and Delray Beach was number five on the list. So Joan, thank you for that. Master Planner and two-time speaker at this event, Robert Gibbs called Atlantic Avenue one of the top five streets, top five streets in the country, and I do appreciate that. We're still in touch with him, and I was speaking with Mr. Cohen, I think, that had a chance to talk to Mr. Gibbs recently, and he said he spent hours on the phone with him. So that's just the kind of guy that Robert Gibbs is. Then I was asked what I would like to share as a final thought to everybody who's here. And what I'd like to share is, if you haven't done it yet, sign up for the DDA emails and news flashes. You're going to get everything from park, from road closures, to events coming up, reminders, interesting stories of new businesses who are downtown, new residents, and stay connected. And anybody who has an idea or a thought, we have an open forum at our Board Meetings every, the first Monday, second Monday of every month, and you have a time to speak, and your issues will be addressed. They always have been, and they always will be. Get engaged with your Downtown Merchants Association and your Pineapple Grove Merchants Association. That is very important. Another thing is that you have the opportunity to populate and optimize your business landing page on the DDA website. Over a half a million visitors annually visit that website. And ensure your profile is populated with the most recent information about your business, any social links, specials, promotions, and anything about your business. And with that, I want to share just two numbers, and then we're going to move on to the next part of the presentation. I have the analytics for March, which our staff had put together. In March, we had 104,600 unique page views of our DDA website. Of that, restaurants were almost 5,000. Happy Hour was almost 5,000. And shopping was about 2,900. So you can see that it's distributed, and these numbers are real numbers. These are numbers that we get every month from Google, and our staff puts them together and quantifies them for us. Let's talk about the Visitor Information Center. Just in March alone, we had 2,600 unique visitors to the Visitors Center, and we want to thank BJ and her team for guiding them. If you haven't been to the Visitors Center to share what your business does, or pass along any information, please do that. They would be happy to share that with anybody who comes in. Again, one more time, April 25th is the Pineapple Grove Art and Music Festival. We do something interesting, interesting to drive business during the month of May before Mother's Day, and that is the Mother's Day Orchid Giveaway, which runs from the 1st to the 11th. And if you spend, is it $200? If you spend $200, you get a complimentary orchid. And how many did we do last year? 500? 500 orchids were given away. And we actually have a sponsor this year, Zimmerman Tree Service, so we want to thank them for jumping on board. And of course, the Frog Alley Festival coming up in June. So that's a look at our Board. That's a look at who we are. And let me, let me next call up Laura, who's got a brief presentation that she's going to share with us.
But before I do that, hi, everybody. I wanted to give the other Board Members, I know Peter is, thank you very much, Chairman. Our Board is, we have a seven-member Board, and we have also Frank Freon, who is not with us, he's on vacation, traveling around the country in his RV. And we also have Big Al from Big Al Stakes, who is under the weather this, tonight, and he's been on, he's in his second term. Both are in their second terms. So before we, I take over and give you a few stats and some updates on our organization, I wanted to let our other Board Members give their reasons why they chose to serve our DDA and our downtown district, because it is volunteer. This is a three-year term. They are appointed by our City Commission. They, so they elect to do this. They elect to be a part of the driving force for leading our community. So, Mark, tell us a little bit about why you love this community and why you want to be on the DDA. I know you have to go.
One minute. I have a 7 o'clock meeting, but luckily, it's only a mile away. I joined the Board five years ago, or maybe four years ago. I was chairman, actually, my first year. But I joined, I've been here 25 years, I've been coming here for about 40 years, and just love the city. I remember, I first came, we were doing the Art and Jazzes, and you went out and you would know every single person on the street. And it was just great. I can say the town has grown where I don't know as many people on Art and Jazz. But these are just some of the things that we've done over the years. For, you know, economic prosperity, for property owners, it's to raise your values, to get better rents. For stores, it's to become more economically viable by our, I mean, when you think, I think we have 60,000 Facebook likes, you know? So I have my sale, and I just give it to them, and it's on Facebook, and it's hitting 60,000 people. I only have 500 on my page, and so it helps that. We do the Fashion Week, which helps all of the retail stores. And then you have Saver Avenue, which helps the restaurants, because it's really restaurants and retail that is the most. But, you know, over the years, I know when we first started, we didn't have any residents downtown. And then I think when people rose their hand, there was a lot of residents, and I think a lot of the property owners, it's maybe 20% of the property owners now are residents. And you came down here for a reason. You wanted a place to work, or just play and live. You know, you want to be able to walk out, go to your favorite restaurant, or go downtown and shop. And so what we do is help that economic vitality, and that's why I've volunteered to serve this. I was on the Merchants Board, which was part of the, I was chairman for, I don't know, 10, 15 years before then when Mavis got on the Board, we couldn't, because of Sunshine Laws, we can't talk. So I gladly stepped down and let her do it. But, you know, as I said, I'm also on the Chamber Board, I'm also on the Parking Board, everything that we can do to help downtown. And I'll say, the biggest thing that people don't know about the DDA is that if there's ever a problem as a property owner, as a business, usually before they call the city, they call Laura. They call our team, and they, she knows where to get those people to go that. And, I mean, I get lots of emails coming down from, the mayor gave me one the other day, and, you know, it's like, okay, it's a new problem that we have to help solve. But we work with all these partners here. You know, Amanda over there, she just had her baby, and then she came back, and I'm one of those people. I was, this weekend, I was out at 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning for the Delray Fair, cleaning up, and yeah, I want this town to look, at 9:00, be looking good. Want it clean, you want it to be safe. I want to be able to walk around at 4:00 in the morning and have my door open and cleaning up, and not worry about somebody coming to mug me or something like that. So you have a great town, but the DDA is strong on that, in helping everybody. So since my wife will kill me if I'm not home in three minutes, I'm turning it over to Mavis.
Thank you. All right. Thanks. Hi, I think I already told you why I got on the Board. But the one thing I have to say about this Board, I don't think you'll find another group of unified people that are so enthralled in our economic development, our merchants, our residents, than this Board. And I am so proud to be a member of that. Many times, and you guys know me, if you've seen me at a Commissioners' Meeting or anything, I have to rely on my notes, so if I don't give you eye contact, and I refer, please, please forgive me, I have a tendency to bounce all over the place, as I'm doing right now. So I'm going to go to my notes. Many times in lasting relationships, if asked the reason for the success, it is often due to having a great friendship prior to making any commitment. I have enjoyed a wonderful friendship for many years with the DDA. It truly has been a friends-with-benefits relationship, and I reap the benefit of being on the receiving end of this relationship. As a small business, there's no way that I could ever afford the valuable tools, such as promotions, marketing, research, and data, all of which the DDA provides. Laura suggested a couple of years ago, several times, that I consider applying for a seat on the Board. I just wasn't ready to make that commitment. Then in 2017, at a meeting such as this, with property owners and business owners, my thoughts and feelings changed. Our now Commissioner, Ryan Boilston, was in then the DDA Chair, and he gave an amazing presentation, which opened my eyes to the vast scope of how and for whom the DDA works. So maybe after tonight's session, someone will go home with that same feeling, knowing that they wanted to get involved, which is exactly what happened for me. It was at this presentation that, it was there also that Bob Gibbs gave a presentation. And I knew when I left that evening, that I wanted to become more involved, to be more than a partner always receiving. I wanted to commit, through serving as on a Board, to be able to give back in any way to help in the continued growth and success of our downtown. My term began with the implementation of the Gibbs Report. In the summary, he gave short, medium, and long-term goals. Through collaboration with every department in the city, with everyone stepping up to the plate, in just one year's time, we have checked off many of the items on the, or a good portion of the items on the list, at least with short term. My wish for the future would be that we continue in our DDA District to offer a great place for people to live, for residents, and an area continuing to offer what most diverse and unique for our merchants to be able to thrive and visitors to enjoy. I would love to see every neighborhood with every street equally desired, valued, and sought after to live, work, or play. Something else that Ryan brought up at that presentation, he talked about the footprint of the DDA. Coming from a farm, it helped me to understand even more so the numbers of square miles or whatever. He said, "There's 340 acres under the DDA's watch." Obviously, numerous needs, desires, and concerns are always of consideration. Every entity must be giving equal attention when making any and all decisions. Give me one second here. Is it not? It may be. But I just need to get my second page here. All right. Oh, well. I had another, oh, there it is. Okay. Sorry about that, guys. When asked, "What else would you like to share with the downtown stakeholders about the DDA organization that we think you should know?" Serving on the DDA Board is an honor and comes with great responsibility. We are appointed by our City Commissioners, of whom are in that position by winning your votes, the community's votes. So by a few degrees of separation, you indirectly chose us. It's a privilege to sit among these Board Members. We're all quite diverse, and it's very important that it's that way. Our Board is a collective, meets once a month. To do the job and to do it well often requires a little more. Attending other Boards and Committee Meetings helps to see the big picture. Taking the time to become more informed is vital and important to making decisions which will affect and/or benefit all of our concerned parties, our residents, our businesses, and our visitors. You put your trust in us every year with the Advalorm taxes. This year's mill is just under over $900,000. It is our job, and we must be physically, fiscally responsible and good stewards for the sake of every item, every issue, and everyone under our watch.
Okay, so I'm going to keep mine a little short-winded, but that was excellent. She covered everything that I was going to cover, but the, again, it's Dr. Conde from the Conde Center for Chiropractic Neurology. I told you that I have deep roots in the community. I know Mayor Petrolia's kids, our kids younger, but they went to the same school, so I knew her before she was famous and an excellent mayor. And, I mean, Laura, my wife is best friends with her cousin's wife, so, I mean, it goes on and on and on. friend with her cousin's wife. So I mean, it goes on and on and on. So anyway, I moved, you know, when I first started my practice, I said, you know, where do I want to go? I want to stay in Delray. Okay, well, I looked west of Swinton at that time, 13 or 14 years ago. You, you know, you weren't looking over there as, as you do now. It's still not, you know, it's better now, but back then it was not the place to be. But took a chance, went over there and, and it's been a great ride all these years. Was able to buy a bunch of real estate up in that area and that's where our office is now. But the big thing of, you know, the big reason why I joined this, this excellent board is, was to try to facilitate in any way the expansion of this great downtown west toward 95. It, is we've been talking about this, it feels like now for 20 years, right? I mean, it's, and things are finally moving, which is so exciting. I was talking to Jeff a little bit ago and things are, are going in the right direction. So my purpose was to see if I can facilitate or help bring some focus to west of Swinton. Try to get some of those businesses to have some representation and, and try to see if we can get some smart development going that way. And, and I have to say, it's, it's moving in that direction. Mayor Petrolli has really been spearheading this thing and I'm, I'm really happy to, that things are moving in that direction. But yeah, that's, that's, you know, what we've been, what I've been focusing on with my kind of small contribution to the, to the DDA. I will say that the staff's amazing. They, you know, I've learned so much about how to manage a city, what the city goes through and the development, economic vitality, these big, you know, city words that are being thrown around in here. But the bottom line is, you know, these people have the, you know, really great intentions. It's not just a job. So anyway, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. The goal of this exercise was to have you get to know the people, if you didn't already know. And the people are very important. In fact, there's a couple of people who've come in since I did introductions I'd like to introduce. Commissioner Bill Bathurst, thank you for your service. And the other is, we have a new police chief, Chief Sims. I want to thank our partners with the police who are here tonight. They're always here. They come to our board meetings. Thank you. Thank you. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Laura. Even though everything that was just said was on my agenda and I missed the whole thing, so I apologize about that. But this is on my agenda and I want to turn this over to Laura Simon, our executive director, who has a presentation. Laura?
Thank you. I think that's mine. Peter, he took my notes. Thank you, though. My board, we have the best staff, the best board. I have to say, I'm a little biased, but I really and truly mean it. We work with a great, and it's a, I'm very proud and very honored to be in this position as a native of Delray Beach and as a, I've just been here forever. And being able to work alongside with this actual organization that really cares, they're compassionate, they're passionate about the community, they have the best intentions of everyone collectively. They see the big picture, they see it as a whole and it's, it's an honor to be here. So I know we, I really appreciate everybody being here tonight. It is, it's great to see such a great group of business owners, property owners, people just interested into our community, our residents. We have a great resident convention. And then all of our partners that are here. And while it's not everyone that we work with, with, because our downtown is, I call it, is behind the scenes. It's a whole behind the curtain. You don't know what happens back there. But it takes a village to really make this village work. So I, I appreciate all that they do and then many emails that I send in the middle of the night and they just, on your behalf to make things work and I appreciate what they do. So, so with that, I'm going to have Tara run the show. This is, I'm going to keep it brief because we want to make sure that we're able to answer questions. I know that if you all have any questions on who the DDA is, of our partners or how it works or things that you have questions about and where we're going in our future. You know, I think as, as we started as an organization, you can go to the next slide, in 1971, by very concerned citizens of our community, one being my father, Roy Simon, and our family who's been here over 100, over 107 years now. But our, but that was a community of residents, chamber members, property owners that did not want downtown to die. They, downtowns are the heart and the soul of your community. And if your downtown is dead, so there goes the, the city. So with that, in 1971, West Palm had just developed their DDA. Our community went to the state, went to West Palm, figured how they did it and said, okay, we're going to make this, make this happen. So with that, a vote went through and chose to be levied of a one-mill tax that would be, that money would be reinvested back into our district. This is the district now. It grew three times. There was a, every time it had to go to the polls and be voted on to be taxed. So you as, as the property owners in the DDA district chose to be taxed to have this, have your downtown continue to operate and have rules and legislation of its own. So here we go from 19, from 95 to A1A. And we have four blocks to the north and Pineapple Grove District and up through Federal Highway. And then on the south, it's the Sofa District and Federal Highway as well, US1, about three blocks. This isn't the actual boundaries. There's a lot of in and out. And this was actually chosen back in 1971, 93 and 98 to cut out residential neighborhoods, to keep the residents. So the Bar Terrace, if you will, is not in the DDA district because that was a residential community. So they are not taxed, but they, it was all commercial corridors. But over time, Mallory Square, and that has become, and now it was a commercial district, it's now residential. So a lot of residential has evolved over the years. So on to the next slide as we move forward. This is our amazing team and they do a lot, a lot of work behind the scenes. So, and many others behind the scenes too. So, so as you all know, we commissioned, as the Downtown Development Authority commissioned, Robert Gibbs and Gibbs Planning Group as a way to update what we call the Cluster Study, which is in 2004, we analyzed our entire downtown district and how it operates and what businesses would be viable here. The Shopability and the Retail Market Study that were completed last year were to analyze again, the downtown, what markets and what, what retail and restaurant and services are viable here and what, what our downtown could sustain. With those, both of these reports are available on our downtowndelraybeach.com website and they're yours. You know, these are things for you to use. These are tools. These are resources. This is what we do. So the Retail Market Study has a great opportunity to showcase what our current retail can absorb and then also what is out there that maybe is in development, that's actually in plan right now of new retail, which is close to almost 400, 432 square feet. We also have it on video. He presented this last year as well in April, or actually, end of March, the Shopability Presentation. So the Shopability Presentation and Report is a report of how to make our downtown a more shopping, a more shop appeal and a, or shopping and inviting destination to that, to the customer, to the resident, to the person that's here. So from streetscapes to parking to storefronts to our land development regulations, to the beautification, to our signage, to our wayfinding systems that are here. All of that is, was taken into account. Bob Gibbs looked at everything that we have as in how we operate as a community as almost at that secret shopper. He says, we are one of the top five downtowns. We have that appeal. We have that Nantucket characteristic, that Carmel by the Sea. We have all of those. We can be that. We should strive to be that and we all need to do it together. Because I know we have it and it is something that, you know, our planning and zoning team, our Department of Developmental Services, they have a new name, so it's hard to get used to. But they, you know, they took everything, he gave great recommendations to our, our team to update our land development regulations, to make sure that, you know, Atlantic Avenue continues to have that shop appeal. And, and we are implementing the 50-plus recommendations that he has provided. Here's just a list of the things that we do. Our, our organization breaks things down into different areas of focus, one being economic vitality and that's where our, our Shopability Study is in that. And we also are very strong in our business onboarding and our business and new resident information. So, and working closely with our development. So we have, I know you all know, they're very familiar with downtown. There's been a lot of cranes, there's been a lot of construction, there's been a lot of road closures going on this year and there's more to come. And our organization is at that table. We're at the, and we're the messenger to you. We're doing all we can to make sure that business continues, no matter if there is a road closure for, for putting panels up on the side of the iPic wall, which is beautiful and open and, and successful. And I think that's where, you know, that's where we're, we're in the day, we're in the trenches with everyone. But a lot of that stuff is behind the scenes. There's not a lot of, you know, financial investment in that. But we are doing pedestrian counts. We are doing surveys. We are doing data collection to make sure that if a retailer wants to open up here, we have that information for them. We know the walk score is 92. We know that we have 24,000 people on a corner of Second Avenue and Atlantic Avenue in a 24-hour period. We have that information and we continue to update that and make that available to anyone that, that really needs that and wants that. So the Visitor Information Center, BJ Sklar is on our team this year. We hired someone on our staff to actually operate this newly renovated center that is at the corner of A1A and Atlantic Avenue that sees hundreds of visitors a day. And for every visitor that comes, we are a tourist community. It's, we've been a tourist community. We're in Florida. We love our tourists. They come into this town. They love everything that we do here. They pour money into our community and then they leave. And then, but that, and then more come. And that's amazing. And we want, and every, for every visitor that comes into our community, they say, and they walk into a visitor center, we have this data, for every visitor, $1,400 is put back into our local community. $1,400. If we see 30,000 people a year into that, into this little center that was newly renovated just last year, which is exciting, it is, it's going to be more money and more, and more jobs, more economic vitality into our community. So that is a great win for us and it continues to just grow and it's, it's an enthusiasm. Our Downtown Safety Ambassador Program, we have a great relationship. We, we did a pilot program a couple of years ago, if you all know. Woo-hoo! Our yellow shirts. So we did a pilot program in an effort to work collectively with our public safety team as a way to combat some of our nuisance issues as well as have people on our street that are there to help guide people, to be a hospitality, a customer service friendly face, to get them to their parking lot, to walk our, you know, our employees that are closing their business at 3:00 a.m. or a person that's down at Decade E4 that lives at Worthing Place that wants to, that needs a, you know, just someone to walk with them at, you know, midnight and they don't feel comfortable. That's what these guys do. They're here for that. And we saw that. Our board saw the need. We did a pilot program. It was very successful. And they chose to invest fully from the DDA solely into a full program. So they're here seven days a week. It started in May last year and will continue on this year. I mean, our goal is to expand it. We only have two safety ambassadors a shift. They run from 7:00 to 10:00 and 7:00 to 11:00 on the weekends. And they're, their footprint is from A1A to Southwest Sixth Avenue and then in Pineapple Grove and along Fifth, West Fifth Avenue as well. So they're available, they're on bikes. You know, our goal is to get them a golf cart, get them out and get more visible and to continue to go, to grow the program. Yay? Okay. He's waving, I'm sorry. Okay. Cue cards. So that is a huge initiative for our organization. Continue. We want feedback. Let us know how it works. If there's something that you want to see different. Again, any of these, we want you all to give, give your feedback. Parking, as you know, parking is a huge, we are a very successful downtown and with every successful downtown, thank goodness, has parking issues. We'll always have a parking issue. If we don't have a parking issue, then we have a bigger problem. So, so with that, we've worked very, very closely with George and the Missy and our Parking Administration Team to come up with a management program. It's still in a work, it's a work in progress. It'll always be a work in progress. Our organization was started by parking and we work with many, many downtowns around the country and everybody wants to go through a day without the P-word. But it's never possible. So, because parking is the number one, number one opportunity that we all have. So parking, we're going to be rolling out a parking survey. Our parking, paid parking program rolled out last June. It's almost a year old. So we want your feedback. We have a lot of opportunities for improvement and we can only get that by engagement and feedback from you all. So that is, I have to say, one of my number one priorities with our organization is, I don't, anything that we do and everything that we do is all from feedback. It's, we come up with ideas, but we always either, our board brings our, our information to us, but we'll ask you all, is it working? What's not working? So we can make sure that, you know, downtown is functioning because you're in it. You experience it. You're the, you're the face. You're the, you're the ones that are using it. So we need to know. So on to wayfinding. Wayfinding was another Shopability Report priority. Our signage, if everyone is aware, we have a very messed up signage system. The CRA, Jeff Costello and I and our DDA organization are partnering with pushing forward a new wayfinding program. It's going to be going out, hopefully in May. We're going to be bringing a consultant in to start the design process, to redo all of our directional signage, from destination signage to parking signage to pedestrian signage. So look for that. It's going to need a community improvement, a community involvement as well. So we'll be reaching out to key stakeholders for that information. Also, just a couple of other things that we, as an organization, invest in. It's all the amenities, our lighting program. So every street pole that's wrapped, every tree that's wrapped, the new lighting in Pineapple Grove, the cafe lighting that you'll see, that's funded by the DDA. So we have a team out there in our street pole banners. We, we manage the street pole banners that are out there. So all of the Welcome to Downtown banners that are out there, we're, we're behind that. We're funding that. We're keeping our downtown, you know, that ambiance, if you will, of our downtown going. So, so moving on, so back on, onto our next phase of what we do. Go ahead. Marketing. So Downtown Development Authority is the marketing arm for our community. So downtown, you know, our goal has been to keep downtown vibrant, keep downtown running, keep the attention, the people coming in to, to fill the shops that want to live here, that want to open up a business. So our goal is, we do national advertising, we do local advertising. We are really the number one site. We've invested a lot into our video program. Because the other thing too, as a native of Delray Beach and a longstanding member of this community, I came into the organization 10 years ago going, we're not showing who we are. Like, how can we not show who we are? Like, we have some great people here. We have beautiful things to say and show. And so we need to videotape it. We need to take pictures. We need to interview people. We need to tell that story. And we continue to grow that. We have a huge video library that sees over half a million views, half a million views. Our Facebook page, our website, our website saw almost a million page views this year. And this is, this is significant. Now am I parched? Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. And that's the man behind the camera that makes it all happen. And I think, you know, as, it's, they, it's, the other part too is the team that we're with, the team that I work with, whether it's our partners at the city or our partners with our marketing team, they get it. They see it. They live it. They want to make sure that we're telling that right story from you all, from your perspective. So we are, we're in the airports. We're out there looking to drive people into our community. We want Delray Beach to be always top of mind. So we also have taken on a huge initiative to listen to what you all want to do as far as business owners and showcase what makes you special. So Small Business Saturday, 95%, this is a new number, Joan, 95% of our businesses are small. That's 20 employees are below. So 95%. It's a $7 billion industry. Is that correct? $7 billion industry. $7 billion in Delray Beach from small businesses. It's huge. So they have a national holiday from American Express. We have taken that over as well. Delray Beach is, is number one. We're the ones out there. Boca's not doing it. Pointon's not doing it. We're doing it. So we're in there. Our holidays, we, and Fashion Week. So Fashion Week has now won two big awards. Fashion Week is very different than any other Fashion Week in the country because it highlights our Delray Beach retail fashion. Six years ago, fashion, we had a huge diverse fashion retail and apparel. It started to change. We wanted to make sure that everybody in our community knew that our fashion industry, that you could buy anything here. You didn't have to go to the mall. We don't want you to go to the mall. So that's how Fashion Week started. It was merchant-driven. It is merchant-driven and now has won a Visit Florida Award for how you, events and programming of your community, a unique... how you, events and programming of your community, a unique way, as well as our International Downtown Association. Savor the Avenue. Savor the Avenue is in its 11th year, sells out in a day. It is, it was started as a way to showcase our dining community. It started on a Thursday to extend our weekends, to drive more business into our community. And now it's on a Monday. And then, as Peter said, we have a new event to highlight our Pineapple Grove District. So it also came as a request from a lot of our residents, a lot of our community members saying, where did art and jazz in the avenue go? Remember art and jazz on the avenue? Remember when we could walk the streets and meet everybody? Where is that? So we took that to Pineapple Grove. So, but with a little twist because of the Beatles on the beach. I'm sure everybody's heard about Beatles on the beach. Since it's on April 25th and it falls into that weekend, it's going to have a Beatles theme. But it's still, you're meeting your merchants, you're meeting your business owners. We'll have about 30 of the different businesses set up on the street. We'll have Beatles music. We'll have almost all the merchants on Second Avenue with open house events. So this is your time to meet your businesses and, and have them be showcased and shine on Thurs, this coming Thursday. So please come out to that event. And all of these others, we have our Art Walk. We are an art and culture community. We have a huge thriving art community and we need to embrace that. We've taken that a little bit further, embellished it this year, adding entertainment and a shuttle so we can include the entire district, not just a small part of it. And then, so then also our Restaurant Week. So we changed, we had Taste Makers, I don't know if anybody remembers Taste Makers, but Taste Makers was a dining event that, it wasn't getting the traction. We listened to our businesses and we turned it to Restaurant Week. So that takes place in August on the off-season. And then also this year, we're doing the Frog Alley Caribbean Fest. So it's in June and it's a celebration of the Set community and our Caribbean culture in the Set community. We're partnering both with the Pineapple Grove and the Frog Alley with the CRA on that as well, to make sure that we're shining a light in all the parts, different parts of our district. So in all of these, we continue to market, promote, local advertising to bring people outside of our community and to discover different parts of our community as well. So with that, I just want to, you know, just, we, there's a lot that goes on in our, in the Downtown Development Authority world. It takes a, it takes a lot of people, a lot of input, but it's, it's you, all of you all that make it happen and the many thousands that we, I don't know if you all realize that there's 1,400 property owners, including our city and CRA property owners, but there's 1,400 properties in this, this downtown. All mixed between mostly commercial and residential and government. And it has grown, it's grown tremendously. And we want to make sure that it continues to grow and evolve. We've, you know, 1971 is when we started this organization. It's, you know, 2019. So as we go into the 19, 20, our planning year, what can we do more? You know, what else can we do? And as we shift and, and pivot a little bit with, whether it's our restaurant community, we're all, you know, we're facing some challenges here. Our Atlantic Avenue streetscape was, hasn't been redone since 1986. And that, so that needs, you know, we're, we're moving into some areas that maybe that we're going to need to do some street changes there. And consultants will be brought in for that through the city. And the Downtown Development Authority is at that table. So we, so we're the vehicle to get your input to help share with our community as well. And then also with our nighttime economy, I don't know if you've all seen, our nighttime economy is, is growing and is shifting and changing. And, you know, our, our younger population, you know, wants a place to hang out and be. And how do we shift with that? And how do we become, you know, a diff, you know, a more diverse community for, and more inclusive? So we take it and look at, you know, all the different organizations that are out there. But, you know, this is about you and this is about your, your feedback and your input. So how can we hear from you more and be more mindful of taking your voice and making sure that it's heard? And so with that, I want to make sure that we're hearing from you tonight, from everyone. You know, we have a huge resident community that's here. We want to make sure that we're hearing from, and we, we want to be, you know, we can't be all things to all people, but we want to be the best that we can be. So, so I, we want to open up to questions. We want to make sure that, you know, you have an opportunity to share your voice as well. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm not sure if this is the forum for it, but you mentioned parking and development, I'm sorry, you mentioned parking, the new development, all that brings a lot of traffic in the area. We used to have a very successful jitney service. We didn't. And there's some word out that it's actually coming back. Can you fill us in on that?
Yes, I certainly can. Well, I'm happy to say, so if everybody heard the question, so in the past, we have, or currently, we have a fixed route system. So is everyone familiar with our trolley service that runs from Tri-Rail to the beach? So we have a trolley system that is in place right now. And it does run a fixed route system. It has two trolleys that run from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And then that is funded currently by the city and the CRA. And then there are private vendors that are out there. There was one, it's called the Downtowner. The Downtowner was the golf cart service. It was a private business that was a free service and it was to pick, you know, bring, really to help with offsetting, offsetting the congestion and traffic into the downtown. So they would bring residents into our downtown, everyone keep their car at home, take the residents that live in downtown to different places. It was a point-to-point service. So fast forward, our great partners at the city, the CRA and the DDA and all of our city teams worked collectively to come up with a program and put out an RFP to look at revamping our transportation service. So that actually just was awarded. I was lucky enough to be on the selection committee that reviewed all, as long, as well as George, I don't know if George is still here, a few other of our partners to review the RFPs for the, both the fixed route service, which is still the fixed route from, we'll have that free service, and then a free point-to-point service that is golf cart or smaller cart, point-to-point, bringing people from the residential communities into the downtown so they can leave their cars at home. That service has been awarded to the Downtowner. So the Downtowner, Delray Beach Downtowner, applied for both services and they were awarded both services. So they will be operating the fixed route service and the point-to-point golf cart service that will be funded in a free service to our community. And it'll be funded by the CRA. And it's right now going into contract negotiation, correct Jeff? Okay, good. Contract negotiation, which should probably roll out in the mid-May to end of May timeframe? Okay. So yes, it's coming back. So we'll work, we're actually meeting this week to talk about the marketing communications, launching of that, so that way everyone is aware of how to get a hold of it, how it's going to operate, where it's going to operate from, all the do's and don'ts for the program. So, good, good question. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. So being from New York but living in South Florida, I like to equate, all right, you know, I understand Soho, I understand the Village, I get these different areas. What I want to understand is what is the future of Delray Beach? You know, you have the development, you have retail, you have restaurants, nightlife. How do you see, how would you describe it? If we were to try and have a philosophy of what we're emulating to become, what would that be?
Excellent question. Do you want to answer? Yeah. So the question is, what, what do we, what is our vision? What is our brand? What is, where, what is the city's, the city's mission statement, right? So that is a, our brand is Village by the Sea, current brand, and that's what we are. So as the DDA's district, we have districts within our, in our downtown that, like our Pineapple Grove Arts District. So that has its own district. We have the Set. We have our beachside. We have different clusters within our community. But we were actually in a meeting this morning with our team talking about that, the brand revitalization and, and that Village by the Sea. Where is it time to do that? You know, where do we go with that? That has kind of been a discussion amongst, you know, all of us at some point. And I think, you know, if you're asking that question, especially as someone coming in, maybe it is if you don't know that right off the, off the bat. Because that's something that others are doing. You know, other cities are doing it. They have it. They know what it is. You know, I know that for us, it is a village and it's taken a village, it is a seaside village. And, but that is a good question. It's something that can be taken, I think, into our, as we move into our future, what we're doing, our planning. So, does anybody else? Would you like to answer that?
So, you know, it's a great question because cities are always changing. It's never stagnant. And we are actually finding ourselves at a crossroads because we are changing. We are seeing nightlife now where we used to not have the nightlife and the nightclubs. We're actually being confronted by what to do about that because it's, it's changing the, the whole feel and the character of our town to moving into a different, different area than we've really experienced. We're going to be having our goal-setting meeting and that is going to be one of the questions that we're going to grapple with as your elected officials. So it's great to have those questions. And, you know, if you have a, a strong passion towards one way or another, we'd like to hear from you because what we want to do is to make sure that we're heading in the direction that our residents and our business owners want us to head in. We're not five, you know, members of the commission that know it all. We don't. We're, we're, I'm here because I'm tapping into you guys to know what we should be thinking about and what we, what our concerns are and how to, how to meet those challenges. So, great question. In the next month or so, actually less than a month, we're going to be having, I guess next week, we're going to be having our goal-setting meeting and that's one of the main questions that we're going to be asking ourselves. No, it's open to the public. Everything's open to the public. I mean, we're, we're government.
Questions?
I just want to say that I'm blessed to have a business here in this town. What you all have done is unbelievable. We have huge pedestrian traffic on Atlantic Avenue. It would be wonderful to spread that to the north, to the south, to the west. And I think there's a great opportunity to do that. I do agree with the mayor's comment that, you know, we don't want to go backwards to where we were just the clubs in the beginning and so forth, and then, you know, the restaurant, the bars, the restaurants, and then the population. I think this is a city people want to live in, they want to walk in, want to be able to walk down to Bednar's and things like that and so forth. And I just hope that we can have the vision to continue to expand it off of Atlantic Avenue to the north, to the south, to the east, to the west and so forth. And again, very blessed to have a business in this wonderful town. You all have done a phenomenal job and we appreciate it very much. Commercial real estate.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? No questions? Like, there's got to be questions. Something burning, any fierce discussion? We have one board member who's not here, he's traveling in the RV. He loves to say, we need to like end it with like a fierce conversation about something. So does anybody have any? It is Frank. Yes.
I was frustrated, there was still tin foil confetti at the parade when I picked it up and some months later, everyone in my room, bubbles, no letter.
That from the St. Patrick's Day parade?
I think last year, I was picking the Hobbie November and my, this was thrown in my pocket.
We hate confetti.
I'm just saying, why don't we do bubbles? In those sticky gongs or cans, if they stick it to your pretty sidewalks, if you want to redo.
We do have cigarette but holders. Thank you to our plan and safety team too, though. Right, the gum. Yes, gum, those black dots. So please, if you're chewing gum, make sure that it goes in the garbage cans because that black dots on our sidewalk is gum.
One of the things that you guys mentioned was you wanted to emulate Carmel or Nantucket. I, I've been to those places. So from her questions, I thought was my positive, from what she discussed, it just dawned on me, have you guys done any, you know, analysis of those small little towns, gone out there and met with the city officials, look at the demographics and see what they did in a, in a viewpoint to the future and how to deal with the clubs, how to maintain the identity in Delray and, you know, type of clientele and residency.
So we do work, we're a member of the International Downtown Association. So the International Downtown Association is 1,100 or more members of all downtown organizations that are dealing with the same issues. And so yes, we do work closely with them. The Nantuckets, the Charleston's, the Carmel by the Sea as a whole. And I think when we're, you know, when we looked at the shopability study, it comes down to the signage ordinances, the potted plants, a lot of the landscaping and how that, that streetscapes look. I think that's where you can, because at that time also, we were looking at, you know, your national chains that come into our organizations. But you can have a Starbucks, but you don't know it's a Starbucks. And, or Macy's, or I'm just throwing these out there. But the signage, it comes down to how you can have that same character. So it's about the character of our community and the character of our downtown that we want to, to maintain and to have, we want nightclubs, we want people to have fun. We want to have, you know, what we see three, I guess three weeks ago, we saw an article in, in Miami's real, one of their real-time publications that said, the development is being driven into our community by our restaurant and our nightlife community. So there's new development that's coming in here because of our restaurant community. That's huge. So we definitely don't want to change that. We just want to make sure that there's manage, management of it, there's balance. So there is a balance for, for all, for, you know, for our, you know, 20, my daughter's 21, she's moving into that place, she wants to have fun at night. But I'm, you know, I'm older and I, you know, it's different. So I think how do we find that balance? I think that's really what we want to find and be able to maintain. We've been, it's not our first time that our, we have nightclubs in our community. We just want to make sure that, you know, we are, we're managing that. And, and it's, and it's sustainable. That, that's the other thing too, where you have, you know, you have the Fort Lauderdale's or the West Palms that, that moved down this path that, that they created a, it just went too far and it wasn't sustainable. So you have, you know, bars and, bars now that want to be restaurants and we, we don't want to get there. So it is working collectively as a group. So, thank you for that.
Laura, I just want to comment, not a question.
Okay.
I have been fortunate to have been part of the creation of this DDA, CRA, I've worked with city boards and, you know, from 68 when we started thinking about the CR, trying to create something like the DDA. And how far the city has come in that time. You know, you sit back today to see what we started with back then and what, and I want to commend you, your DDA's board, the staff, you've got a great staff by the way, and the CRA, the city as a whole. I mean, I don't know, you could fault anything, except I'd like to see more parking. And that's what, that's what started the whole thing and we keep going backwards. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. We have one, one or two more questions. This woman right over here, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I just want to say, I moved up after 25 years of living in South Beach and I was very involved in the community there. And what I saw was they became a victim of their own success. And they, the landlords in the main district there in South Beach raised, they got greedy and they raised rents so high that the only people that could afford to be there, the stores, were chain stores. Now, I love Delray and the fact that it is considered the Village by the Sea. And I don't want to see empty storefronts because no small businesses can afford the rents. So how can the DDA prevent that from happening in Delray?
So, thank you. So that is very, it's a great point because that is the main reason we hired Bob Gibbs and invested $60,000 into having him look at our downtown, provide us with those recommendations to make sure that our small businesses are sustainable by creating more of a shopping and a shoppable, meaning of inviting destination. So, and that has to do with changing some of the way our signage code works, our, our streetscape looks and our parking, so that way that the shoppers can get there. And then also that they're, they're able to sell more goods so that way they can be, they can be, stay, continue to stay in business. There is that, our percentage, you know, of our sales to rent. So it's working closely with our property owners that are here to making sure that there is that balance and that we're making sure that the customers are still coming and keeping our businesses in business. So that is one way, but there's still, and implementing a, a study that was done, taking that, not leaving it on the shelf, making sure that it actually takes, you know, it takes hold and that we're actually making, seeing that through. So we'll continue to do that. There's still a list to be done. So, thank you. Questions, sir?
First, I was going to echo what this gentleman said about all the great things that's going on in Delray. We certainly appreciate We certainly appreciate it. I know that everybody cares and has the same goal for it. And the brochure you have here and sustained placemaking has in process about signage and plants and paver repair, parking lot programs, all this kind of stuff. Can you give us an update, what's going on and when things are going to happen and what's going to happen? And I don't know if there's a place I can go to see this. I mean, this is all interesting to me. I think it'd be, all be great.
Okay. So that's a lot of the reason why we had our partners come here tonight. So there's a lot of, there's many things that take place in, in our community. So, and coming from our shopability studies. So the pavers are a big, are a big, they're old, so that's part of the streetscape. So our pavers are in repair. So as they come up and they start to buckle and our trees start to grow and they start to buckle the pavers, that is an ongoing process. So as I said, our Atlantic Avenue corridor is going to be taking a view of consultants. We're going to get a consultant's view of it, get some implementation. But an ongoing, as our pavers buckle, our team is out there to make sure that they're fixed. So we have a great street team that is, is omnipotent. Amanda's out here, her team is on street all the time. If there's something, there's an issue, they take care of it. Our streetscape, our landscape, so we're looking at, redoing our landscape nodes to make them, again, more sustainable so they're not trampled, they're not dead, they look beautiful. So that is one thing that is also on the, our clean and safe team is in operation always doing. We do at our board meetings, the second Monday of every month, our partners come and give an update as things are progressing. So we invite you to come. It's a public meeting, it's at City Hall in our lower conference room. You can come and get an update from all of our partners that are there, that share from our police, police department, our clean and safe team, our parking team. You'll be able to get any kind of update that happens on an ongoing basis. We also do through our email and communications and we'll get those as they happen, updated to you so, as well. So things are in the works.
It's kind of a repair and replace kind of deal? There's not a plan to go through and go, here's what we're going to do with plantware, with pavers to upgrade what we have as a cityscape right now from the, there's not?
That is being, we're, so it is in process to get someone in to give us that overview. So, so what happens first, as we pull a scope, we're going to actually hire, they're hiring a consultant to give us that full streetscape look from street amenities to lighting, to the trees, if we need to replace trees, if we need to do stamped concrete versus pavers, what do we want to do? What do we want the street to look like? So first it has to give an overall, from 95 to A1A, what does our street look like? And that's what it looks like first. And then, so in the meantime, it's up in a, in a repair basis. So. So that's through our planning and zoning team, not planning and zoning, through our publics work department, so an engineering team who, Missy, I think, left. So.
She said that.
Oh, she is in back, oh, she is. Oh, you were behind the camera. Did I answer that okay?
You just prayed. You just prayed. There'll be, I would just add, there's going to be a lot of public outreach because along with that, a lot of opportunities for all of you to weigh in on what, what you would like to be happening if you were downtown here.
Yes. Yeah, we can't do this in a bubble, for sure. So, yes, ma'am?
I have a residential question. I noticed over the last 18 years, that's how long I'm here in Florida, in the area, that downtown Delray is cleaner, it's beautiful, it's really developing new shops and a lot more people. I also noticed that there's a lot of people who are moving here from up north. And I was wondering if any of this beautification would be spreading west. I'm west and I noticed that we could use a little help with litter and some things there, although there is some development, some new shopping centers, and I love my place. So I'm really happy to be here. I was just wondering if any of the improvements would be out west where the rest of us who live here will be all year.
I heard, I heard that you're west of, in the Sims Road area. That's county and that won't be, I'm talking, yeah. If you're west of like Military, that's county. And so the city wouldn't be out there doing any cleanup or replanting or any of that. The city pretty much is, is, it's, the line just about, there's some ins and outs, but it's Military Trail. So as a city, we, we do go west, but only to the point of our city limits. So if you're west of Military, you got to go to the Palm Beach County Board and talk to them.
The west part of Military in a lot of areas is county, yeah.
It's, it's almost like east and west. And there are some pockets, though. So, you know, you have to just kind of find out what your zip code is and pretty much determine it from there.
All right, we have one last question.
You have a specific question. My wife and I, we lived in downtown Delray for two years. We love it here. But one specific question, thing that we've noticed, and it's especially more pronounced after season, is the sidewalks are disgusting. And are there any plans by the CRA to do anything to either pressure wash the sidewalks, to clean them? I missed the first part of the meeting, so I don't know what's being planned as far as, you know, new pavers or whatever, but it's, it's pretty bad right now.
Right.
To the point that, you know, you practically have to take off your shoes when you return back to your home. Or put booties on.
Thank you. So the question was pressure spraying of our sidewalks. So cleanliness, so we do, what we have a clean and safe team. And our clean team is our beautification team. And they do, they are responsible for pressure spraying the public, but they don't, the public sidewalks, our restaurants are also, restaurants and business owners are also responsible for pressure spraying as well. We, as a city, only do it several times a year. And I know that we had just recently done it several months ago.
In March.
In March? Oh, March, okay. And we will, is there plans to do it anytime soon, Amanda?
Yes. So we are, we're shooting for four times of, four times a year to do pressure cleaning within the Clean and Safe District, which is our downtown. Unfortunately, there's a lot on the pavers. So one, two, three, even four times isn't going to get a lot of that stuff up. It's going to have to be consistent. So since we did just have Delray Affair and we had a lot of foot traffic, we are planning to come in again and pressure clean immediately following any kind of special event we have. That's the contract that we have right now with pressure cleaning. So St. Patrick's Day, we did it just before. Delray Affair, we'd like to do it just after. We'll get primed and ready again for the Fourth of July. So any special event we have, our goal is to come in right after the event and completely restore the city within 24 hours. Obviously, pressure cleaning takes a little bit longer, but that's always our goal in Clean and Safe. So we are working on making those pavers brighter and cleaner. It's just going to be a little bit of a process.
Awesome. And I want to commend our city team. We, you guys, we have a lot of things happen in our downtown. It is like a revolving door sometimes and they are out there, there could, I mean, Delray Fair just happened this past weekend. Would anybody know it if you were out there? I mean, it's amazing what they do to make sure that our still, our city is still shining. So, but we have, you know, that part of our organization too is reevaluating. Our downtown's changed. You know, it's not, we need to make sure that we're staying up on top of it. There are organizations out there, other downtowns that are pressure spraying every day out there and it costs money. So it's how we position it and how we shift our budgets and making sure that we're staying on top of, of what we need to do to make sure our city is shining. So, so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to our illustrious leader, Chairman Peter Arts.
Thank you very much, Laura. Great presentation. And I want to personally thank all of you for coming out tonight. Every one of you is important to us. I also want to thank our city leaders for coming out. I want to thank all of our city staff for coming out. I want to thank the DDA staff and the DDA board. So before you leave, if you could do me one favor, stop by one of the booths, say hello, pick up one of the cups that they have or one of the things. And if you have a question for them, please ask. If that's what they're here for and we love to connect with them. Our ambassadors are over here.